To welcome everyone here to the Mount Isa City Council Ordinary Meeting. The time is now nine AM and I now declare the meeting open. Um, I'd like to start off with acknowledgement to country. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the Kalkaduns and Injilangi people, the traditional custodians on the land on which we meet today, and pay respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We also extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island people here today. Uh, the recording of council meetings, please note that ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the Council Recording of Council Meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded by remaining in chambers. It is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. Um, could I please get someone to move the motion that in accordance with section two seven seven of the local government regulation twenty twelve, the following participants may be taking part in this meeting via teleconference and will be noted as in attendance. The Deputy Mayor Phil Barwick and councillor Mick Tully. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. All those in favour? And that is unanimous. Carried. Okay. All right, so um, item two is a prayer and I will now ask councillor um, Kim Coghlan, if she would please um, do the prayer today.
Good name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Lord, let the light of your divine wisdom direct our deliberation and decision and shine forth in all proceeding and acts of the Mount Isa City Council. May we all seek to preserve peace and harmony, promote wellbeing in our city and continue to bring the blessings of good governance in this area of responsibility. Lord, grant this prayer to us who work for the common good through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you councillor Coghlan. All right, so that takes us now to item three, which is apologies and leave of absence. And we have nil today. Um, item four is public participation. So um, I'd just like to invite Mr Barry Merrick to do a presentation of historical books. If you'd like to come through into the middle. Have we got a microphone? Oh, we've got a microphone coming, yep.
Um, just through here.
Just trying to be camp, please. Um, on what you um, like a presentation to the city library. This has been one of the council people to be one of the younger. Former resident. Peter Larson. Lost it out back at the line. Two thousand seventeen. Big tub, plastic tub full of thirty five millimetre flies. Top layer was my chest that's why. We can't replace these at the time if you want them here. What sort of, I had a look. I had about ten miles. Was happy. Got them at home. Early, late November. Eight hundred and eighty dollars. Fly, no, I. Six and three. Brisbane, Sydney, twelve hundred. Fly. Took me three months. Thousand seventeen. Mine's probably right up there, isn't it? An ownership, if you may remember. For the city. You have no. Just to give you some idea. These two photos there. All thirty five mil. One of them, your. At the Isa Hotel, nineteen fifty three. Quality just blows away with the water. And here. Probably here. So they're a little bit bigger than the standard. But then big base got four of them. So we go right through. And I've got a few like Tellamwaya. Old railway station of I A. What's that? Orton, Orton Maitre. Hospital and various sites. And in this particular book, it's got Brisbane and Sydney, nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty three. So it's been a great pleasure to donate that to the library. I'll drive later. This is what started it all. Well, show up on the way to work. Tripping three, four feet. You're all out. Could you give me any? How I got like that? Started him off and then all the slides back then, but the others followed. Going one, one more by scan, photos in the library. In my impression, the more I got. So this has been sixteen years from the make. I've got it printed um, December. Printed by the same company, Mount Isa Mine Hall. Mine is. So hence the cost of fifty dollars a copy. It's the number two ore shaft of the engineering drawings. That's from day one, goes right through. Original photographs. And papers presented, color photographs and courtesy of Peter. And right through to the very end where there's nothing left. But we, Neil and I decided on the name. That's the book. That's the bottom of it. The board at the end of the year. So it's only a very limited number of these, got fifteen by me. We've got all the land, everything there. So instead of heritage, it's missing a hole in the ground. It's got whole details there. That's my second book. But for the library.
Well, Barry Merrick, I'd just like to thank you so much for the donation. Um, it's no coincidence, we're turning a hundred next year. And I know councillor Peter McCrae will be very excited with this historical books that, you know, just add to our story. And it's really important that the, the history of Mount Isa is preserved. And it sounds like um, you've intervened and uh, don't know how that happened, but they, the right, it came to the right person at the right time for you to intervene and, and stop some of our history ending up at the dump, which happens in a lot of cities and towns. So I can't thank you enough for that. Um, I would like to say that um, this, as much as I can't imagine myself actually reading the um, number two ore shaft, it is so important that this, this sort of history is recorded. And I do remember a time when um, uh, there were some problems with um, Lake Julie's pumping station. And Ian Brown, who's a fifty year member of the um, Mount Isa Mine, said, I was there when they um, um, put this, when, when they were building this. And the actual drawings aren't what we actually built it in. They actually changed some of the. Now, no one else knew this story except for Ian and we went through miles and miles of uh, MIMAX. And there was a photo of it just being completed before any water was there. And Ian Brown was correct. But he was the only one who knew that information. So a lot of our valuable information is either leaving town or, or disappearing. So um, you know, I, I understand how important this is. So thank you so much for that. And on behalf of Mount Isa, we thank you. So um, and I, and I hope that we um, do, do justice for next year.
But there are some other ones there that Peter has got, were on MIMAX. So he started out with a sparky. Then he went into um, photography in the fifties. And from there, uh, he was taking photos for MIM in the early fifties. So that's why I'm sort of wondering how they got him. I mean, he was probably taking notes. There's a big gap. There's certain years of missing. Passed along in two thousand. Where are all those photos along?
What years are missing?
Um, it, it. From nineteen sixty three. There's a bunch from seventy two, sorry, seventy four, sorry, for um, for them. But that's it. So seventy four, he's in, he was a radiologist. Left the mine and then I believe he's, he's left the mine. But he's uh. Great. Bitten out of the pub.
Thank you so much for having me on the city council. Thank you so much, Barry.
Thank you.
Through the chair, Barry, you said um, you could buy those at Outback at Isa, is that right? The photo book, is that where that's available? No, not yet. Okay. So you buy it at the post office? Thank you. Thank you. Um, if anyone wants to have a look at this, this is some amazing. There are some amazing photos in this. I just um, yeah, I could sit here right now and go through it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Barry.
Good work, Barry. Good work, well done. Okay. Oops, maybe if I took my glasses off. Okay, so um, we're still in public um, participation, but um, I'd just like to, before I invite anyone to um, the public, I'd just like to um, note that um, casual for course, so um, over the month, every Friday, our workforce dress casually on a Friday and they all put in a gold coin donation. And then at the end of the month, they pick a, a worthy charity that the staff have decided to donate that money to. So for November and December, the council staff raised a whopping five hundred and ten dollars and five cents, which is fantastic. And they are going to donate that to Man Up. So congratulations to all the Mount Isa City Council. Very proud of, of that achievement. So thank you.
Sorry, through Madam Mayor, just to describe what Man Up does. Man Up, they've already been here. Um, I don't know if councillor Fortune's had them in the mines because they do it as well, but they run uh, exactly what they say they're going to do, a Man Up program. And it's Man Up around prostate cancer. And they go through and basically um, go through all the embarrassing bits of going into, uh, get tested and everything else like that. They reinforce that it's based on a blood test now, not any other sort of tests that goes through. As a result of Man Up talking at the depot and talking in here to all the admin staff, I'm aware of at least ten uh, male staff that have gone off and been tested. So uh, they do it for free. Um, and so I'm glad we're able to give them. It's a mother and daughter. Unfortunately, the father slash husband uh, is one of the casualties of prostate cancer. And that's their mission to actually do that. They committed to Womba, uh, to use them for a number of years.
Thank you, thank you David. Okay, um, I now invite any members of the public if you would like to present. Oh, yep. Um, do you mind speaking into the microphone?
Oh, okay. Um, I'm here today to make a couple of observations of the Australia Day Award that I attended yesterday.
Oh, oh, excuse me, can you just identify yourself before you start? Sorry about that.
My apologies. Um, my name is Kim Murray. And along with a number of other people, I attended the award yesterday, or the Australia Day function. A couple of observations that I thought was important that I bring to everyone's attention today. First and foremost, I'd like to say that I thought the awards ceremony and the naturalisation of citizenship went along quite well. I found the Mount Isa City Council staff who were there very efficient and very professional in their work on the day. What I did find concerning was for the first time in my database of Australia Day functions in Mount Isa, there was not a councillor in attendance. The mayor was there on her own. Political grievances aside, personal. Aside, Australia Day is one day that everyone ought to come together. I thought it was an affront particularly to the winners of the Australia Day Awards and those people, fifty seven of them, who decided to make Mount Isa their home and become Australian citizens yesterday for Australia Day, that there was only the mayor there. I don't know, I understand two of the gentlemen are not here today, but there are another four people here on this council that ought to have been there yesterday. I thought that was an affront to the city of Mount Isa. We as citizens have voted you people into this council. The least you can do is attend the Australia Day Awards and represent our council that we have elected you on. Sadly, my observations don't only refer to the council members not being there. The fact that the mayor forgot one of the council names, one of the councillors' names, is not good either. I thought it was a very poor turnout on behalf of the council. Not the council staff, the awardees or the citizenship people. But the fact that the first time in Mount Isa's Australia Day function history, this is the first time that the council have not been represented on that day. And I know come election time, new councillors will be going out expecting to get the people who were um, awarded their citizenship awards and their Australia Day awards, you'll be looking for them to vote for you. How sad that you couldn't find the time to go to the Australia Day function yesterday. That's all I have to say. Very sad indeed.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Kim Murray. Um, can I just say, thanks for taking the time to give us some feedback. It's, it's always great to get feedback from the Mount Isa community, whether it's positive or negative. Um, I'm, I'm sure all of us will take what you've said on board. And uh, yeah, my apologies for not remembering one of the councillors' names. That, that is all me. So um, thank you very much for, for coming along today. Okay, so that, that takes us now to item number five, which is confirmation of previous minutes meeting. So. Did I miss one? No, no. Um, would someone like to move the um, officer's recommendation that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the fifteenth of December twenty twenty one be received and that recommendations therein be adopted?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak or any comments on this one?
No, I just saw them as true and correct.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments on this?
None from me, Madam Mayor.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Um, would, would someone like to move five point two? At the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twentieth of December twenty twenty one be received and the recommendations herein be adopted. Oh, sorry, at the special meeting on the twentieth of December. Would someone like to move that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion?
Streton.
Second.
Thank you councillor Streton. Um, any comments on, on this one? No, all those in favour? And that's carried. Item five, five point three. Um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the special meeting held on the eighteenth of January twenty twenty two be received and recommendations therein be adopted? Would someone like to move that motion?
Move.
Uh, thank you councillor Fortune. Would someone, McCrae, would you like to second that motion?
I will.
Any comments on, on the special meeting?
None, thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Um, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item six, which is actions from previous council meetings, which is uh, which will, these will be discussed in, in ten point one, is that right?
Yes.
All right, so do we need to move that one? Yep. Um, number seven, uh, declarations of conflicts of interest. All councillors present and on teleconference are invited to declare any conflicts of interest in regard to the agenda.
None.
No?
No.
Yes, um, sorry, uh, um, Mayor Slade, I'm not too sure if it's a conflict, but uh, item nine point one in the correspondence report, um, Carver Hydraulics actually built the Ardmore phosphate plant for Centrix Metal. So whether or not that is um, with your correspondence to them or not, but I, I'd just like to declare that, please.
Thank you. Is that uh, declarable or uh, received? I'm just referring this back to the CEO.
Sorry, through Madam Mayor, councillor Tully, if you could fill in a form describing your um, conflict of interest and submit that, that would be appreciated.
No problem at all, David, I'll, I'll do that as soon as the meeting's finished.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the next item, um, do you want me to read out the, the minute or just put the motion forward?
Through Madam Mayor, you might want to introduce your merrill minute.
Yep, so the next item is item eight, which is eight point one, which is the merrill minute. So um, what we've decided to do that at um, every council meeting, which is on, which is happening once a month now, I would um, talk about um, personally what I've been up to and also what the council's been up to in that month and also highlight things that were coming up in the, in the next coming week. So um, I'll, I'll kick off now and see how um. Do we need to um? This is the first time we've really done it, so.
No, let the mayor speak to it first. If the mayor speaks to it first, then we need a seconder, sorry, a mover and a seconder at the end of that.
Okay, so, but, so this is my merrill minute for the first one kicking off for twenty twenty two. So happy new year. It's fantastic to be back after Christmas, after the Christmas break and looking forward to a bright new year that twenty twenty two will hopefully bring us all. Just wanted to congratulate Mount Isa City Council on a couple of events. The fireworks New Year's Eve for twenty twenty two was absolutely wonderful and probably the best I've seen in Mount Isa so far. So a big thank you to all staff involved. Um, planning is, obviously this is before uh, yesterday's event, but planning is underway for council's COVID safe Australia Day Awards and citizenship ceremony. Congratulations to all nominees. It's such a big honour to be nominated for Australia Day Awards and on behalf of Mount Isa, I would like to thank you for your contribution to our city. I would also like to remind everyone that the sports expo is on again, although it will be delayed and we are hoping, and we are proposing the nineteenth of February for this event, if we can do it in a COVID safe environment. I would also um, ca, oh, sorry, I almost read the same thing twice. Council has received tremendous positive feedback on the Gallipoli Pump Track and the Ninja obstacle course. And it's really good to see a piece of community infrastructure being so well utilised by our community. I'd also like to thank residents for their patience with the upgrade of the family fun park. There are some major issues that make this project particularly challenging. For example, many of the fittings installed at the family fun park are no longer manufactured. It is hoped that final specifications for the upgrade to the family fun park will be completed in the very near future. On a brighter note, it has been great to have inflatables in the pool at splashes. This has proven to be very popular with the young people and some enthusiastic older people. Additionally, council has a, a tile that has replaced the. Additionally, council has a tile that has replaced the majority of the broken or missing tiles in the pool. This maintenance makes the pool safer for all users and avoids sharp edges at the bottom of the pool. Over the next weeks, the upgrade of the skate park will commence. This will see new infrastructure put in place that will allow skateboarders and scooter riders to have a lot more fun. Additionally, there will be some more shade structures delivered on site. It is really important for us as councils that we engage with the community and I just wanted to remind you how you can keep informed. The online community engagement, all council meetings are live streamed, as are feedback sessions on particular projects. Council places designs and feasibility studies on our website to receive feedback from the community. Surveys are placed on social media on a regular basis. The budget process will involve face-to-face feedback, which will be live streamed, as well as the opportunity for formal submissions. Offline community engagement, a cup of the councillor, which happens monthly in the library and that's an opportunity really to sit down, have a cup of tea and just talk informally with the councillors that are there. Mount Isa Mail, it's a hard copy A4 newsletter, which is placed in council buildings and local businesses to let the community know what's happening with some of our key projects and where we're up to. There's also opportunities for members of the community to be involved in advisory committees to counsel such issues as Lake Mundara. Okay, so Mount Isa is experienced Covid-19 and council is working closely with other government departments and agencies to manage the situation. Council has facilitated use of the Buchanan Park as a testing facility and supported the use of the civic centre as a vaccination centre. Council will continue to provide support where it can and continue to deliver essential services. I just want to take this opportunity to really thank the North West Hospital and Health Service. They have been doing an absolute wonderful job in the North West. It is great to witness that the community spirit is alive and well in Mount Isa and the challenges from Covid have brought us together as a community. I think I speak for everyone when I say we're all very proud of us and to call ourselves Mount Isans. Keep safe, everyone, and I hope 2022 is an extremely good year for us all. Can I get someone to move the recommendation that council receives and accepts the January twenty-two merril minute?
Move.
Thank you, councillor Tully. I can get a second for that motion?
Second, Bowery.
Thank you, deputy mayor. All those in favour?
I'll be voting against due to the inconsistent messaging that we've received through Queensland Health and the Queensland, North Queensland Health Service. There is a lot of information about people who have caught Covid, but not enough information about who has been vaccinated and caught Covid. It's inconsistent messaging and part of the council's use of council's facilities, such as Buchanan Park for testing and the civic centre for the vaccination centre, are well supported by council and the community. But I believe that the messaging back from the health services has been inconsistent and that is why I'm not going to be, um, supporting the merril minute.
Through you, madam mayor. Councillor Fortune, do you want your name recorded as voting against it? Or do you wish to have a division?
That is correct. I've just stated my position and I'll have my name as against the merril minute.
I just want to be clear whether you were stating your point or calling for a division.
I have noted that I'll vote against the merril minute. And the reason is because of the inconsistent messaging. There's a sentence in the third last paragraph where council will continue to provide support where it can and continue to deliver essential services. That's a job that council should be doing. I don't see how we can provide support if we're not getting the full information. And that inconsistent messaging is my point.
That's all right. Through you, madam mayor, we'll simply note that you voted against.
Because of the inconsistent messaging from health services that cannot be put in there?
Through you, madam mayor, you don't usually do that. You simply, normally, simply note who voted for, who voted against.
Okay.
You want your name recorded as voting against. The other way of doing it, through you, madam mayor, is to call for a division and if you call for a division, then you are clearly noted as voting against it as well. So you've got two options.
Is there an option where he gets his reasoning?
No.
Okay.
That's why I was clarifying.
Thank you very much, Mr. CEO. I'll just have it noted that I'm voting against.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Fortune. I will just redo the vote, just to be clear on this one. All those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. And councillor Fortune, your vote is acknowledged.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item nine and it's the reading and consideration of the correspondence nine point one.
Through you, madam mayor. Councillor Tully, you're remaining in the room for the vote. You're on mute.
Yes, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the December 2021, January 2022 correspondence report?
I move, Bowery.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
Coghlan.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Would anyone like to speak or comment on this motion? Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of...
Thanks, madam mayor. No, look, I think it's good coverage of the letters that have gone in and out from the officer mayor and also from council. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm just looking at a letter from Tony McGrady here regarding the Queensland Plan Ambassador's Council and it's got in the paragraph there, thanks for providing the civic centre, technical stuff like that. Were they able to source that at no cost? Was that free for the state government?
That's a question for the CEO.
Through you, madam mayor.
Usually we charge for that, like if it's a school or a community group. I'm just wondering.
I was under the impression they were at the IBIS, but I'm happy to be corrected. I don't know.
They were upstairs at the civic centre.
Yeah, I didn't know either. I just read it in the paragraph in the correspondence last night.
So we're suggesting that perhaps they've gone directly through MYCO, but we can follow that up. I simply don't know. I wasn't at the event.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't sort of, I'm not part of the MYCO board, so I wouldn't know either. All right. No more questions? All those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item ten, which is executive service reports and ten point one, which is the council decision report for 2021. So I'm just slowly coming to it, probably like everybody else. Would someone like to move the motion that council receives and accepts the 2021 council decision report? Thank you, councillor Tully. I read your lips. And would someone like to second that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Councillor Tully, would you like to comment on this motion?
Um, yeah, I just think, I'm not too sure what the process is, CEO, but I'd like, do, once these things are completed, can they be taken off the list? Because that list is getting quite long to read through and, you know, once it's completed, I'm guessing it probably should be taken off. Is that...
So through you, madam mayor, we simply leave them on there for the record because those are the decisions that have been done and then we'll reconcile that at the end of financial year.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the council decision report? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. So the next one, which I'm slowly coming to, is item ten point two, which is Australian Local Government Women's Association National and Queensland State Conference, first and third of March 2022. All right, got it. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation that our council is represented by the Australian Local Government Women's Association, ALGWA National and Queensland State Conference, to be held in Ellie Beach from the first to third of March 2022 by Mayor Councillor Danielle Slade? Would someone like to move that motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan.
Coghlan, sorry.
Streton, second.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to know what benefits it would be for you going to this. I really, actually, this is probably one of the ones I really actually like the idea of. It talks about all aspects of local government, especially things like dealing with difficult people, councillors, the media, which is something I'm new to. And it sort of covers a lot of the, um, I don't know if it's in, is it attached in here? But it's, yeah, it's very good. I actually would recommend for yourself to even attend. It looks like it covers all the major points that we sort of tackle on a daily basis. But we've already had training on that. Like, we've already had training on those sort of things. I just want to know what other benefits it would bring to Mount Isa. That's, like, I'm very, very aware of, like, spending money and I need to know what we're going to get back for it. Like, are all the mayors going, like, in these times, like... It's actually open to all women in local government, so it could be staff members of councils, mayors, councillors, yeah.
Through the chair, there was the Women in Leading Local Government Scholarship that we all got last year that we took part in. That was the same thing for a whole year.
Yeah, I realise that, councillor McCray. Yep. I'm happy to send you, I believe that the CEO did send out the information to you. Yeah, so what did you think? You didn't like it?
No, I don't. I did the course and I thought that was, that was very, I got more out of that. I've been to these things before. Unless it's run very, very well, it's a waste of money. It has to, and unfortunately, you don't know if it's going to be run well until you get there. So, but I was happy with the training I got from the women in local government, so...
Through the chair, Jolinda Lee is down there speaking and she's the lady that ran the course last year and most of those topics were covered, so I did do most of that through the course. And then there was a networking event for the people that had the course at the LGAQ last year in Mackay that I attended, so very similar thing.
So you said she's good?
Yes, she was good.
Great. Any more comments?
Yeah, through the chair, are there any specific advocacy benefits for Mount Isa City Council from attending?
Well, I'm hoping so. I had a good look through. It looked actually like I really had a lot of meat and potatoes in that, in a lot of those, a lot of the ones I do look at, I tend not to be interested in because they do go more into operations. But this looks like it's really targeted at, definitely, at, um, developing better skills and, yeah, so, no, I thought it looked good. What did you think? Did you read the...
Yeah, I was looking just for the benefit for our female representatives if they could advocate for Mount Isa City Council and pick up the, um, the points on offer. And I think a lot of those points have been already available through training and the courses that were available last year. So, yeah.
Just through the chair, like, I'm happy to support this motion, but I would like to say, in my last term in council, every time a councillor went away or the mayor went away representing Mount Isa, that a written report was done after it and, or verbal, as to what benefits come out of it. So I'd just like to make sure that that's done.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Through the chair, madam mayor, do you think we've got another lady in the staff that's not a councillor that would like to go with you on foot forward?
Through you, madam mayor, I've floated that and there are no staff at this point in time.
Okay, thanks, David.
Okay, if there's no more questions, all those in favour? One, two, three, four? Okay, and that's carried.
Can councillors just do that again, please?
One, two, three, four. So that's carried. Thank you. And Fortune.
And Fortune.
Sorry, just... Are you asking for your names to be recorded or are you simply...
I'll ask for my name to be recorded, thank you, as a vote against.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Okay, so that takes us to item, uh, ten point three, which is media and communications report, November and December 2021. I'm just moving to it. So would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the November and December 2021 media and communications report?
Move, Coghlan.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Would someone like to second that report?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to have any comments or speak on this one?
No, no, I'm all good, thank you. I just wanted to move it so it was on the table.
Thank you, councillor McCray.
Um, no.
Thank you. Any other, any comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to ten point four, which is...
Sorry, sorry, madam mayor, I was just wondering, CEO, David, if there was any feedback on the installation of the water meters, whether or not there was any ratepayers that chose to have their outlet downsized?
You're in luck, councillor, and through you, madam mayor, I happen to have the manager sitting here and I might ask him to grab a microphone and provide some feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, councillor, five hundred metres were installed leading up to the Christmas, but we were only installing twenty-millimetre metres, so we haven't approached those people about downsizing yet because the larger metres aren't available. The next lot of twenty-millimetre metres will be available in March, so probably February, late February, we'll start that process. So there's plenty of time still left for that. We do have a list of people who have larger metres deemed V-twenty-millimetre metres and we'll go out generally to the others as well, so it's well in hand but hasn't commenced.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we sort of voted on that last one, so we're going straight back into ten point four, which is the Development and Land Use Quarter Two Overview and Report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts a Development and Land Use Quarter Two Overview Report?
I'll move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the Development and Land Use Quarter Two Overview Report.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Can I get someone to second that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Councillor Fortune, would you like to make any comments or speak on this one?
Yes, thank you. Councillor Slade, I'd like to thank the land use and development team for a very comprehensive report there on the quarter two. There is a lot to cover on that and a summary would take a bit too long for the council meeting. I will probably make point of information coming out of the planning about open public consultations. And one is for the electricity supply options for the North Wales West Minerals Province. And the Department of Energy and Public Works currently have the electricity supply options for the North West Mineral Province open for consultation. And there's an extract from the website there. It's about the consultation. Electricity is currently supplied to customers in and near Mount Isa and Kunkari through the North West Power System, NWPS. Electricity is currently supplied to customers in and near Mount Isa and Kunkarri through the North West Power System, NWPS, which is inside a 3,700,000 square kilometre province. Due to its remote location, the NWPS is not connected to the NEM, the National Energy Market, and is, electricity market, sorry, and is, and its large commercial and industrial customers pay a higher delivered cost of electricity than similar energy users connected to the NEM. Electricity users in the province who are not connected to the NWPS receive their power mainly from local generation. Industrial consumers on the NWMP need access to renewable energy sources to reduce their emissions profiles. So there's three options for the electricity supply to the North West Minerals Province, and they've been identified for consideration and presented in the Electricity Supply Options for the North West Minerals Province Consultation Regulatory Impact Statement, the CRIS. And there's the three options there as business as usual. The NWMP remains supplied from local generation. This supply could evolve to involve low-cost renewables. Option two, NEM connection through the copper string project. It's a privately owned and operated transmission line connecting Mount Isa to the NEM near Townsville. The transmission line would require a range of derogations from the National Electricity Law to operate in the NEM with the regulatory certainties sought by the proponent. And option three is the NEM connection powering or another state entity. And that considers the impact of connecting the NWMP to the NEM with the project assessed and regulated as close as possible to the national electricity law and rules. And there's a have you say, it's on that website, and they would like your feedback by the 28th of February. There's also the other public consultation that's open for comment, public comment, is the Queensland Home Warranty Scheme Review. And the Department of Energy and Public Works currently have the Queensland Home Warranty Scheme Review open for public consultation. And the extract from the website gives information about the scheme, which is established in 1977. The Queensland Home Warranty Scheme acts as a safety net for consumers undertaking new builds and renovations. It covers loss where a licensed building contractor fails to complete a contract for residential construction or fixes what is defective. So the review is taking place. There's a have your say by the end of 2022, sorry, 2022. So the review will be conducted in four stages. There'll be a public survey to gauge current community and industrial views. That was up until August 21. The release and discussion paper based on survey results early 2022. Information sessions across Queensland to define local community concerns from early 2022. MCC and government consideration of the consultation results and policy response early to mid 2022. So have your say, there's a link to their website that is participating in information centres, information centres for the Department of Energy and Public Works. So if you can get on that website, if you've got queries or if you're a builder and want to participate in those information sessions, get onto the website and get that done. So it was a little bit long, probably twice as long as I went through all the other summary. But in closing on that, I think the, the report for the quarter two was very well done by the department and we'd like to, I thank them for the work.
Sorry, through you Madam Mayor, thank you for the comments in relation to the electricity submission. That's been, the submission's going to be prepared by economic development, and that'll go to the February council meeting, and there'll be actually a formatted one. Please keep in mind councillors can fill in that survey that you've identified in there at any point in time. So if you want to look at that, I'm unsure, and the manager may be able to help me in relation to the housing affordability one, but I don't think we've looked at that one yet. It may be in our best interest to wait until the discussion paper comes out, and the manager appears to be nodding. Is that correct, Gail? Yeah.
Through the chair, just on the electricity submission, David, that'll be, CEO, that'll be flagged with councillors prior to going in. And there'll be opportunity for input, I'm guessing.
Yes, there will be. Both gentlemen are working on it at the moment, both Ross and Brian, as I understand it. So that'll come up to councillors' draft.
Yeah, I think it's good that councillor Fortune has raised this, and I think we do need to promote it as much as possible because it is quite a big thing. They're talking about some significant infrastructure changes to electricity supply in, into the area. So, and you know, we know the amount of investment that that's going to take. But also at the end of it all is what happens to the cost of electricity prices to residents and to businesses particularly throughout the, throughout the area. And I take the point that a lot of it is based around the major industries, the resource industries and those sort of things. So I do think it's important that people have an opportunity to speak and to input into this as much as possible. So thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So do we have any more comments on this report?
Just through the chair, just like, with home-based businesses, once they're established, is there, I don't know the process, is there follow-up to make sure that home-based businesses are like, you know?
Complying.
Complying with all the rules and regulations?
You'll just need a microphone, Gail.
Yeah, one bit a second.
Sorry, Gail.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor. Councillor Coglan, we do only through usually complaint-driven. So they do apply for a development application, they will get, if they get their approval, that's fine. Sometimes we'll do a compliance, but generally it is complaint-driven.
Okay then, no worries. Thank you for that. And just through the chair again, with the start of all the sports seasons and all that coming up, I know there's like compliance with the kiosk and all that that have to be done in our sporting organisations, but are the council looking at getting any more food, food handling courses done early in the year? We haven't had them for a while, that's all.
Through you Madam Mayor, I don't know if the director's aware of any, but if there's none there at the moment, what we're actually doing at the moment in relation to food licensing is going through and redefining the definitions of what is a kiosk, what is a cafe, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe at the end of that, I'm sure the director will take it back to the acting coordinator, and she can, Joy can work it out from there.
Yeah, and I think that's a great question councillor Coglan, because, you know, a lot of sports just want to do a sausage sizzle, you know, and that's where it becomes a grey area. Does everyone involved have to have a food handling, all those sort of things? So, you know, that's where it'd be good to be a bit more clear.
I just know, just from previous times, that the local laws would do the courses. They were really informative, and I know you can go online and do them, but it's not, it's not the same as having someone there that knows what they're talking about, asking questions, interacting with other people. So I thought it was a good thing that Mount Isa City Council used to do those. And I just, I know it's trying times at the moment with COVID and that, but, you know, hopefully in a couple of months we might be a little bit better. And with a lot of sports clubs, community groups, you know, positions change, so different people come in. That's all.
Yeah, no, through you Madam Mayor, it's a good suggestion. And obviously, given the amount of sausages I cook, I've got the qualification. I haven't framed it or anything, I probably should. But yes, as long as you've got the responsible person who's completed the course, the other people are ancillary to it, so to speak. But that's fine.
Thank you. All right, so if there's no more comments on this one, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which now takes us to item 10.5, which is Centennial Place Final Draft Design. So I'm just, probably like everybody else, just trying to get to that point.
Page 121.
Okay, I've gone past it. One bit a second.
Would you like me to move it, Madam Mayor?
Through, through the chair, I can move it.
Oh, yep, I'm on it now, but yes, please, that'd be great.
It's a development and town planning portfolio, so I'll read the recommendation that council approved the Centennial Place Design and resolved to proceed with calling for tenders.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for this motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor. Oh, you're a bit slow Deputy Mayor. Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you, Chair. Just to give a bit of background to that, the council's engaged consultants tracked to and provided council with two concept designs for Centennial Place, and council agreed for the two designs to go out for public consultation feedback. For an overview, in order to ensure the maximum exposure of conceptual designs, posts were placed on Facebook appearing from 9th of November to the 15th of November 2021, with a reminder to vote posted on the 1st of December 2021. Online survey was also undertaken, appearing from the 9th of November to the 6th of December 2021. The community was encouraged to vote for the concept design that appeared to appeal to them the most. In addition, council held public consultation meetings on Monday the 15th, November 21, with a total of three people from Mount Isa community attending. The second consultation meeting was held on Wednesday 24th of November 2021, where only one member of the public attended. The two concept, the public consultation outcome was for concept A, and it was, voted the preferred design by only two votes. Given that there are only two votes, divided the design concepts, concept A and B, the project team determined to keep with the overall design of concept A, but include some design elements of concept B to reach a final design that would have appeased both sides of the public. The elements taken from concept B and integrated with concept A are as follows. An added extra container kitchen, incorporated additional separated lunch dining area, incorporated more shade by the way of additional tree planting, and arbors over Centennial Walk entrances, and additional seating. So just a comment on the budget and resource implications there. There's a number of funding opportunities identified, and once the, if the proposal is accepted, it'll go out for tenders, we'll know what the price is going to be, and then we can source some funding.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor McCrae, would you like to make any comments on this?
Um, yes, I would. Like, I know that overview makes it sound like there wasn't a lot of community consultation with only the three people attending in person. But I know with the online consultation and the Facebook, do we have an idea of numbers of how many completed the survey at all?
Through you Madam Mayor, I wonder if I might seek your indulgence to ask the manager of Land Use and Planning to speak to this matter, and she'll be able to give you the figures.
I just want to make it clear that a lot of people did have input into it.
Yes, please. So if I could ask the manager to make a few comments, that'd be great. Manager, would it be easier for you to sit there, and that way you can, you don't have to hold that microphone, just use that microphone that's there? Because I know you've got some paperwork as well.
That's a good idea.
Uh, I was going to say that one.
Top job. So you can get him on the microphone.
Go Gaily.
Barwick's getting nervous. Yeah, yeah, move it.
Right, in terms of the survey monkey, so there was a total of 138 people voted, responded. And concept A was 70 votes in all, and 68 the concept B.
Thank you.
So, sorry, through you Madam Mayor, if you could talk to the two different concepts, that would be really helpful.
Okay, so. So the concept A, and I think it was the round oval that took a lot of people's, you know, what they liked the most about it. The Centennial Walk will be done in 10 sections, so it'll be for 10 years for every section, for the 100-year walk. And so that was something that the project team really liked, that the consultants come up with. So we wanted to keep that in whichever design that would be chosen. So there's opportunities for Eat Street, those sorts of things on there as well. Hence what is the kitchen, the container kitchens and that sort of thing. There's the opportunity for pop-up little stalls as well on the oval areas. We've got a little secluded area there that people can go and dine. They can go and have lunch, you know, you can go and get a coffee at a coffee shop, you can meet someone there, and it's just a nice pleasant area for everybody to sit in. It also could be cordoned off for, as in alcohol-serving areas for when events, big events are on or something like that. So it serves dual purpose. The arbors were suggesting to be covered, and that's to provide shade. We've also got another big area down in the corner of the block, which we're proposing to be covered. We've also got some little, we didn't want to make it so much for children. It was more to do with adults' place to go because it's in the CBD. But did make some little suggestions for children where they've got those little water things coming out. The, other than that, we've got some water features put in, some misters, just to try, what the whole idea was, the briefing was as cool and shady as possible. I hope yous will enjoy it.
No, thank you.
It took some doing.
No, thank you. It's extremely exciting, and I'm going to be interested to see how we can incorporate this in the Oz Street Festival as well, because that, that's well positioned, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
So, so, no, I can't wait. It's very exciting.
Sorry, through you Madam Mayor, are there any questions for the manager?
Um, sorry David, just through the chair, I would just like to congratulate Gail and her team on that report. It's, it's, it's very comprehensive, you know, especially with all the pricing and all that, so, yeah, well done.
Definitely. Thank you.
Through the chair, I compare with councillor Tully, I think, you know, the other aspect that needs to be taken into consideration is they have taken design elements from concept B and pushed them through into a concept A, which councillor Fortune raised. But I think it's, it's been an excellent approach. Both concepts were quite good. I'd just also further like to say that this is a fabulous project. It's been around, you know, since last term, but it's, to see it coming to fruition now is fantastic. One of the big things that have been missing from Mount Isa CBD, I think, is community space area such as this. And I think the fact that it's been, you know, really pushed along the cool and the shade sort of design aspects is making a really big and iconic facility for Mount Isa. So, yeah, I think it's a fabulous project. And again, we'd like to thank Gail and the team for taking it this far. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, and congratulations, Gail. All right, if there's no more comments on this, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. That takes us to item 10.6, which is Special Paid Pandemic Leave Version 3. So the officer's recommendation is that council adopt the Special Paid Pandemic Leave Policy Version 3 as presented. Would someone like to move that motion, please?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Would someone like to second that motion? Thank you Deputy Mayor. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, no, I think the policy looks comprehensive, and it's just important that we look after our people in this time.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you have any comments on this one?
I agree with councillor McCrae's comments, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us now to item 11, which is Corporate and Community Services Reports. 11.1, the Finance Overview Report, December 2021. So would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? And the motion is that council receives and accepts the December 2021 Financial Overview Report. And the motion is that council receives and accepts the December 2021 financial overview report.
Move, Barwick, that council receives and accepts the December 2021 finance overview report.
Thank you councillor Barwick. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you councillor McCray. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, sure. Thanks very much. It's halfway through the year, this report. And I think it's showing that council is being very control, had good control of the finances. At the present time, the, it does show that the revenue is down a bit. However, we are aware that there is a large lump coming through with the, potentially with the, the Mount Isa Waterboard dividend, and that's due around March, so that should smooth out the revenue side of the budget. On the expenses side, you can see from the profit and loss, if it's well in hand. We're sitting either at 50% of expenses for the year or under that. So again, I think that's showing good control and good management of the finances throughout the year. We've got the capital budget showing there, which is sitting at 27%. Again, I expect that'll take up in the second six months. And I understand there's a review happening shortly next month for that part of the budget. The, the other item is the high level of outstanding rates, which you'll see in a paper that follows this, around a pretty big milestone for council to try and reduce that outlay because it is, it is starting to build up as quite a significant liability for council. A couple of other points, the water meter reading's being done for the filling period, so the quarter-two water consumption notices, period from the 1st of October 21 to 31st of December. And the first half-yearly water consumption notice for residential properties for period 1 of July, 31st of December will be going out shortly. And rate notices, you know, inevitably will be forwarded out the 21st of March for residents. Age debt is, I don't think there's anything significant there. There's, most of them are current. So another table there showing the QTC loans outstanding. And I'd just like to point out again that council haven't borrowed any money over the last term or this term against that, and we are continuing to pay down debt, so that's well in hand as well. And our cash at bank is quite good. There's no problems there at all. I think we've got really good working capital to go forward with. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Do we have any other comments on this report? Okay, all those in favour. And that's carried. Thank you. And it takes us to item 11.2, rates and arrears. And the officer's recommendation, if someone would like to move the motion. Do we have to say all this, or can we? Which is just the paragraph or the whole lot?
The council resolves pursuant to.
Okay. Yeah, would someone like to move? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
So the recommendation is that council resolves, A, pursuant to Regulation 142 of the Local Government Regulation 2012 Queensland to sell the land described in Schedule A to this resolution by reason of the non-payment of overdue local government rates and charges, which have been outstanding for over three years in relation to the said land, and authorised the taking of all necessary action to effect such rates in accordance with Chapter 4, Part 12, Division 3 of Local Government Regulation 2012 Queensland. There's a schedule there attached showing 84 lots, which potentially could go under the hammer. I don't think I'm required to read every one of those out.
No, Deputy Mayor, if you could go to B, please?
B.
Yeah, I'll go to B, so just outline that there are 84 lots there in my calculations. So B, to delegate to the chief executive officer its power to take all further necessary action pursuant to Chapter 4, Part 12, Division 3 of the Local Government Regulation 2012 Queensland to effect the sale of the land as described in Schedule A to this resolution, including for the avoidance of doubt the power to end the sale procedures, including pursuant to Regulation 1413 of the Local Government Regulation 2012 Queensland. And C, to delegate to the chief executive officer its power to take all further necessary action to write off any remaining debt for enabled property sold by the sale of land process to be free of all encumbrances on transfer of title in accordance with the Regulation 1454 of the Local Government Regulation 2012 Queensland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would anyone else like to second this motion?
Coghlan, I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Coghlan. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks. As I mentioned before, this is a significant milestone in the, in our recovery of these rates. You can see from the table on page 149 that there's over half a million dollars above five years. At five years, there's another half, $569,000, and then there's the four-year levels and the three-year levels as well. So I think council has been incredibly patient and supportive of ratepayers over this time. And I think we're really down to a point in time where we need to move on some of the, clearly some of these rates where there's been no attention being paid for these for a long, long time. And I don't think it's the end of the road. If somehow this money turns up for the rates, then, you know, these properties may not get to the auction. However, at this point in time, we are obliged by government, by our regulations, by the rest of the ratepayers who are actually supporting this level of debt, that we go ahead with this, pushing these lots through to auctions. So, yeah, it's just one of the difficult things that council has to do, and we need to stay in control of the finances of the city. So I'll finish there. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would anyone else like to comment on this one?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Can I highlight that the finance staff will work proactively with all of these people to encourage them to undertake all possible actions to pay off their rates so the House does not proceed down the auction path? So where there are opportunities for different plans to be put in place and everything else, council staff will work in a proactive manner to do that. But it's important to realise that unless everyone pays their rates, some people are still receiving the same level of service, but they haven't paid their rates. So, yeah, it is challenging. I don't know, Director Linguana, did you wish to speak to this?
Yep. Thank you, CEO. Through the chair, Madam Mayor. The CEO is absolutely right. What's happening at the moment is that everybody's getting the same level of service, some more than others. However, in terms of payments, there's some ratepayers that haven't paid a single cent to council in more than seven years. So under the Local Government Act, we are obligated to make all these collections. I know we've had some hold-ups because of the impact of COVID-19 on the finances of households. However, even as a local government, we have an obligation to collect this just for the equity within the rate section. So, yes, we'll be supporting all ratepayers. If there's financial hardship, please reach out to us and let us know. You can put payment plans in place. There's all these options available under our recovery process. So please reach out before we get to this final stage.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, all those in favour. And that's carried. So that takes us now to item 11.3, which is the splashes overview report for December 2021. And would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the December 2021 splashes overview report as presented?
I'll move, please, that the council receives and accepts the December 2021 splashes overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Would someone like to second this motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, most, most things are in the report. I just would like to say it's been well received that the pool has had the tiles fixed on the bottom, which is a good step forward. The staff down there continue to make it one of the best facilities in Mount Isa to go to for families. Not saying they're stopping there, they're always looking at different ways to improve. I know that the swimming club will be starting training, I think it's in February sometime. So, no, just all going good, the chairs, the barbecue facilities. I'm just wondering when the private area for barbecues, when that will be up and running for hire for people in the public?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I believe a pricing schedule has been worked out at the moment, and that pricing schedule needs to sort of fit the marketplace. To be really frank, they were waiting for the grass to grow a bit more. I suspect it's grown a bit more with this run. So hopefully that area will be available. That will be of a higher order than the three barbecue areas down at the other end. So that's where that one's up to.
Excellent. No, that's excellent news for people that want to do have families, but, I mean, do have parties and that, that can make sure that they have an area that they can go to. So, no, all going well down there.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Any other comments on this one? Councillor Fortune?
Yes, sorry, just, Madam Mayor, through the chair, I see there's a cost there for Daryl's mowing, to mow the grass. Is that right?
Through you, through you, Madam Mayor. We've done a review of the budget just over the last two weeks. And wherever possible, we will be using parks and garden services rather than contractors. So thank you for picking that up.
Thank you.
That's been in place for well over a year, so we're now going to go back and review that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favour. And that's carried. So that takes us now to item 11.4, which is the local laws overview report, November and December for 2021. And the officer's recommendation, if someone will move it, is that council receives and accepts the November and December 2021 local laws overview report. Would someone like to move that motion?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the November, December 2021 local laws overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Council held an abandoned and council vehicle equipment auction in November. Over 100 people attended, and all vehicles and equipment were sold on the day. Council continues to work with the Queensland Police, assisting with illegal camping and drinking alcohol in a public place. Discussion around no camping, no drinking, and no littering signs being erected along Leichart River hotspots, plus more street lighting. This should be complete January, February 22. The pawo virus update, the council animal management facility conducted two deep cleans, and sealant was applied to the puppy and dog kennels. Council closed the puppy kennels for two weeks to carry out the works. Staff continued cleaning during this time to remove disease and pawo virus to prevent any further spread. Also, council rangers have been proactive with informing the members of the community, the council watering hours by placing flyers in letterboxes and speaking to the householders when any outside of watering has been sighted. That's about it.
Thank you councillor Streton. Does anyone else have any comments in regard to this report?
Just through the chair, I've asked before, in Flynn Street, that we have a pump station located in Flynn Street. And there is quite a big feral cat issue around Flynn Street and in the Creek and all, Creek area. I know that we can't have cat traps in public areas, but the pump station in Flynn Street is actually council property. I'm just wondering, can we put cat traps in there to help reduce the amount of feral cats that are in that area?
So through you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Coghlan, if you could email that through to the director, the director will act on that.
Okay, no worries. Thank you, CEO. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour. And that is carried. That takes us to item 11.5, which is the environmental biosecurity overview report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the November and December 2021 environmental and biosecurity overview report?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
That council receives and accepts the November, December 2021 environmental and biosecurity overview report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Just a bit of overview there. Environmental and biosecurity services processed a total of 117 requests for environmental-related services and complaints for November and December 2021. Their environmental health officers have inspected 57 food businesses as part of routine inspection calendar. Three food businesses were issued with improvement notices, and nine food businesses were issued with direction notices under the Environmental Protection Act. Environmental health officers completed the routine inspections of personal appearance services within Mount Isa, a total of 13 non-high-risk personal appearance services, and five higher-risk personal appearances services were inspected. All businesses were issued with an inspection report at the conclusion of the inspection, outlining any issues.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this report?
I've just got a question on the Little Red Flying Fox alternate route project, roof site, sorry, project. It's up to a point where it's, the dead trees have been replaced. There is going to be no other planting of trees there above and beyond what's there now.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'll hand over to Director Linguana.
Through the mayor, we have planted the trees that did die. We also planted a few extra ones, just in case. I think the limitation for us at the moment, the barrier to putting more trees there, is the irrigation because each tree has to be specifically irrigated to a certain quantity, and certain times it's quite specific. So we're not looking to adding any more trees until we see the improvement in what we've planted so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just through the chair, I know I have brought this up before, and I know the CEO and departments have been working closely on it, but it's been brought to light with, we've had such lovely rain. A lot of people are going to have a lot of green waste and that with the amnesty days that we've asked for. Would they be at all be able to be brought forward, like if we could run them? With the seven-on-seven-off roster coming into play, I think it's mid-February or end of February, we could have one Saturday and then the following Saturday, and we would get both shifts. Just that sports are starting up, and, you know, everyone likes to have a clean up after the rain. It would probably be a good time to look at doing that.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The director will come back to you, councillor Coghlan.
Through the mayor, we're still working through that amnesty, coordinating that effort. But in the meantime, I would encourage the sporting group for anybody with the green waste to come through to our landfill, and that staff will be available to support them in that way.
Thank you. If there's no more.
Through the chair, could I just ask a question on the illegal dumping, please? I note in the report that there have been a number of cases, and they all appear to be closed. But I'd like to just get an idea or a bit of a picture of what the officers are seeing in terms of the level of illegal dumping, and whether we're having any successes with our media campaign and our signings that we put out on the roads out of town. Thanks.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The director will bring up a briefing to the next workshop, and we can just go through where we're up to. We'll also look at, the question was asked actually last week about how many, who is servicing the cameras and how many photos have been taken, so it's a good time to be doing that.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other questions on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. That takes us to item 11.6, which is the Waste Management Overview Report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council receives and accepts the November and December 2021 Waste Management Overview Report?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor. Thanks. Recommendation that council receives and accepts the November, December 2021 Waste Management Overview Report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Madam Mayor, thank you. November, December 2021 Waste Management Facility has been busy, been busy months working on older new projects. During November 2021, Waste Management was working alongside environmental services and external consultant without updating the site-based management plan. with updating the site based management plan. There are still works to be done to ensure that all operational procedures will work with the waste management site for the next five years. And includes all new projects such as the material recovery facility and the waste transfer station. At the beginning of December twenty twenty one, after being delayed on multiple occasions, the Mount Isa City Council received the first garbage truck with delivery of the second truck expected at the end of January twenty twenty two. The waste transfer station is under review, council is working on ensuring that the new structure and layout can be used efficiently and effectively once it all ha- has been opened to the public. And just one thing, I'd just like the, uh, the, um, executive, how's that, um, second garbage truck going? Is it on time?
So it's second, as I understand, the second garbage truck is in operation. We had a meeting, uh, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, we had a meeting, uh, much earlier this morning with the staff in the waste management area. Um, those staff indicated, uh, councillors will remember, we had two garbage trucks that crossed the financial year. But the ultimate bid on the garbage trucks was for three. So we were reminded again this morning that in next year's Capital Works Programme, there really needs to be a third truck included in that. But, um, that's, that's something for very strong consideration. But one must also take into account all the other factors that councillors discussed as well.
Thank you there, David. I must have met the, um, new truck, rubbish truck that's, uh, are out there. The, they seem to be going hard and, um, we've had no complaints.
No, they're doing ver- through you, Madam Mayor, they're doing very well.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right.
Uh, yeah, through the chair, just a question again, please, uh, the, uh, waste transfer station, um, has been, uh, under review. Um, uh, we, we're looking at a sort of an opening date for that yet?
Through you, Madam Mayor, Director.
Through the mayor, uh, we are looking at, uh, there's a number of safety issues that have come up with the transfer station that's just recently been built. So, uh, we're looking at improving the safety element of that. Also with the traffic management, we're reviewing how the traffic will flow on the site with the transfer station and its location. So until we, um, mi- mitigate those risks, uh, we, we, the transfer station will remain shut. But we're working through it as quickly as possible to resolve those issues and open the transfer station.
Thank you.
So, uh, all, all that's, uh, those, uh, through the chair, the, um, the issues, they'll, they'll be able to be resolved, do you think? How's that looking?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, they will.
Yes, they will.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven point seven, which is Building Better Regions Funding Round Six Application. And the officer's recommendation is that council endorses the application for funding for the library upgrade, Concept B, under Building Better Regions Fund Round Six, the infrastructure s- stream. Can I get someone to move that motion, please?
Mary Barwick.
Thank you, Councilor Barwick. Would someone like to second that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, Councilor McCray. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, uh, I think, um, we, council has a number of, um, rather large projects in the pipeline. And I think, um, this is, is one of the, uh, ones that is nearing, uh, you know, a, a good concept place to be in. So, um, it, it, these are the sort of projects we need to have funded. And I think it's an ideal project to go up for the stream, the Building Better Regions Fund. Um, we do need to recognise that, um, council will have to contribute a significant amount of money over a couple of years. However, I, I think there's probably no escaping from that, the way grants are issued, um, in the current, um, climate. Uh, where, you know, you can get the bulk of the funding from, from governments, however, council, they need to contribute at some level. And, and I guess we can look for other opportunities, uh, to support, with support funding to bring us up to the, to the level of the construction. Um, so, yeah, I'm supportive of the project. Um, I think, um, the library is a key, um, facility in, in Mount Isa. And I think, uh, it, it's a long time since it's been looked at in terms of, um, bringing it into the, uh, you know, the contemporary use of libraries and, and that's changed significantly over the last, um, you know, a couple of decades. So, uh, I think that, um, yeah, this is, uh, this will be a really great project if we can get it up through the Building Better Regions Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, through the chair, we, we only had a look at, in one workshop, the plan that they put forward. Is it my, am I correct in my understanding that we get the funding and that plan that we were presented with will, will be what we go with?
Through you, Madam Mayor, do you want to speak to this, Director?
Yes, I can. Through the mayor, uh, so what happens is that, uh, what we have at the moment is a master plan, the library master plan. The next step is to get the detailed designed, uh, detailed design done. So that's where we, that's where there'll be some consultation with the successful architect or builder. Uh, and we'll have all those elements of where individual, uh, aspects of the infrastructure will be. So there will be another stage before we go in and, uh, uh, construct. But, uh, what we're working on is because of the timeline being very tight with this funding, we'll go and, uh, go to the market for a detailed design anyway, because this is a project that we would like to pursue going forward, regardless of whether we get the funding or not. It, it's always helpful to have a detailed design because most funding needs, uh, to be, needs for council to be shovel, to have shovel ready projects.
So what my question is, is that detailed design what we were presented with at the workshop?
No.
No, that's yet to come. That's where the director's coming from. So that's a master plan. What we're actually looking at is the detailed design, not for the entire project, the twenty two million dollars, but a component thereof.
Okay.
Uh, please keep in mind, councillors, this is building better regions, therefore it's federal. And therefore it's gonna be at the mercy of whatever the results are of the federal government election. So I would be surprised if they process the grants within three and a half, four months. But I've been surprised before.
Okay.
Any more questions on this one?
Yes, sorry, uh, through the chair, Madam Mayor, um, CEO, so if we aren't successful with the ten million, um, does that mean it's squashed or not?
No, through you, Madam Mayor, we'd look at other funding opportunities to come through to upgrade the library. So there's plenty of other ones there. There's one we've got to put in for next month called Local Government Grants and Subsidies. It may well be that that fits under that programme as well. Uh, there was, uh, an application we could have put in for, uh, building our regions, which is state government. But that focus in state government is really on the, um, uh, on the water at this point in time. So we put in a funding application, councillors would remember, that was put in, uh, late last year, uh, that actually dealt with an upgrade to the water system.
Yeah, Chris, that was, that was the, um, qu- question because I, I feel that, oh, I think the water, the water system's probably more important than the library at this stage.
Uh, that's, that's, as I say, that's covered in building our regions.
Yep.
Which is state government, not to be confused with this one, which is building better regions.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, uh, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which, um, takes us now to item eleven point eight, which is Building Better Regions Funding Round Six Application, Community Investment Stream. So would someone like to move the officer's reckon- recommendation, which is, and the motion is that council endorses the Regional Small Business Information Forums Project? Am I reading that one right?
Yep.
Yep, um, as a application for funding, um, through Building Better Regions Round Six? Sorry, Building Better Regions Fund Round Six, Community Investment Stream. Would someone like to move that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, Councilor McCray. Would someone like to second that motion?
Seconded, Streton.
Thank you, Councilor Streton. Councilor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, not really.
No, you don't have to.
I can if you like, though. I mean, it'd be great to see some of our, um, uh, community groups or businesses apply for this funding.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, I'll just pop a clarification in. Um, so this is funding to council to organise forums to support businesses within the, within the city and the broader region. Um, the councillors, you've just, um, endorsed the infrastructure application under Building Better Regions. This is the community stream, which councillors will remember that we got money from the community stream to fund, um, a hundred years of Mount Isa. So again, this is that same, uh, theme, uh, that's going through from there. The contribution from council is twenty five for a hundred thousand dollar project. So this would need to be done in close cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce and some of the big businesses round here as well. So it's about trying to support businesses after the impact of COVID and everything. And you'll see there that the dates go out June, September, uh, December and March. So it's four of those conferences, or training forums, conferences and everything else that would occur over that period of time. One would imagine there would either be a, a guest speaker or someone with special skills to come in and talk to business, an expert.
Through the chair, um, to the CEO, uh, with this, would, um, sporting and community groups, organisations be classified as, like, would they be invited along to this as well?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, yes, they would. Anyone operating a business, whether it be profit or not for profit.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, and, and as it says in the document, it'll help council meet its commitments to the, uh, small business friendly charter as well. So that's fantastic. All right, is there any other questions or comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us on now to item eleven point nine, which is feedback submission on draft Queensland Resources Industry Development Plan. And would someone like to move the motion that council endorses the feedback to the, to be provided to the Minister of Resources on the draft Queensland Resources Industry Development Plan? Would someone like to move that motion?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, yep.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll move the council endorses the feedback to be provided to the Minister of Resource on the draft Queensland Resources Industry Development Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, Councilor McCray. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, look, I think, uh, the, the, um, I would, thanks, Madam Mayor, yeah, the, uh, content of the submission is, is, is based on, um, you know, information and understanding of the region, um, that council has developed over quite a period of time. So, uh, you know, without going through the whole document, I think that, um, the items that have been raised are, you know, largely around infrastructure, water and housing and the sorts of things that are really basic infrastructure needs for a remote community like ours. So I think it's, um, uh, you know, it's, it's well, it's, it's well, uh, populated, the content of it. And I think it, um, cer- certainly gets a message across. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any, um, no other comments on this one? Counselor's come back or no? Oh, I have to keep going? Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us now to our next item on the agenda, which is, um, item eleven point ten, the sign on Expo for twenty twenty two. Um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation that council approves the postponement of the twenty twenty two Sign on Expo to the nineteenth of February twenty twenty two? And that the event be held at the Civic Centre, subject to COVID nineteen restrictions and Queensland Health Directives? And that council assist in promoting all clubs, organisations, volunteer groups and associated businesses through the council ver- various online platforms? Would someone like to move that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, Councilor McCray. Would someone like to second that motion?
Fortune.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. Um, Councilor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, yes, I would. Um, the Sign on Expo, everyone in the community knows it's a very well attended event that we hold every year for sporting clubs and community groups. Um, the council was getting a li- little bit of feedback that at Buchanan Park, only vaccinated people would be able to attend due to that venue. So we're looking to move it to, um, the Civic Centre with COVID, a safe, um, event planning so that everyone who wants to attend can attend. Um, we've postponed the date because the Sign on Expo usually coincides with the beginning of school and with beginning of school pushed back a little bit. Um, we just think nineteenth of February be a lot better date and also hopefully then the peak of COVID may have passed. We'll see what happens. Um, and also council is supporting clubs to go on online platforms. And I think if we get it happening online as well, that will be a great resource for the community that we can use in future years as well.
Thank you, Councilor McCray. Uh, Councilor Fortune, do you have any comments on this one?
No, thank you.
Any, any com- comments at all from any councillors?
Uh, just, uh, through the chair, yeah, I support, uh, Councilor McCray's, um, um, uh, comments there. And, um, it is an important and I think a, a really, um, integral part of our, uh, council calendar now, this sporting expo. So it's, it's good to see that we're still able to go ahead with it under trying, trying circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. So that takes us to item eleven point eleven and the, this is for, uh, Zonta Club of Mount Isa. And the officer's recommendation, if someone would like to move this motion, that council support the change of approved activity for the Zonta Club for, uh, of Mount Isa International Women's Day twenty twenty two. And the event, improve the sponsorship payment of five thousand dollars, including GST, to be paid in the twenty twenty two, twenty three financial year for the event to be held in September twenty twenty two. Would I have someone please move this motion?
Mary Barwick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Would someone like to second this motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. Uh, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, sure. Uh, look, Zonta is a very proactive, um, club in Mount Isa. Um, they wouldn't, um, postpone this, uh, event lightly. And, uh, I think in consideration of what's happening, they've, they've, uh, managing this quite well as they, as they normally do with their events. Um, it is, uh, a very, uh, high profile event for the year and particularly for the women of Mount Isa. I think it's, um, um, it'd be in council's interest to support it and I'd be very happy to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, anyone else have any comments on this one?
Oh, just through the chair, I have been in touch with, um, the Zonta Club on this one because they've changed it to September, which is a very, very busy time in Mount Isa with finals and that. So I've asked, um, that they just, um, you know, think about what night they do have it on. But I am gonna send them as soon as I know when all the sports are having their finals so that they can work in with the community. Cause as we all know, you know, you can have three weekends with doing nothing and then on one weekend we'll have about five things. So they are going to, um, I'll send them those dates and then they can work in with it when all the sporting groups are up and running.
Yeah, I, I think it's an easy, it's a no brainer one. Everyone finishes a week before school holidays. So the grand finals nearly on every sport, maybe one week earlier than that, but usually it's that.
Yeah, you're just finding now that, um, they are, that you, that did used to be the case. But I think a lot of sports now are sort of, um, having a bit different, diff- shortening their seasons for, for a variety of reasons. So, um, so, yeah, we'll just send them dates through to them. And I know they'll, they'll work in because they do work in very well with the community.
And, and there's a good chance we might have a late start as well with, with what's happening with COVID. Thank you.
I have a question with this one. Um, like I support Zonta and always go to all their events and this is a, a really great event. Um, just at the end of last year, I think we had to approve this sponsorship because with their changeover of committee, um, they missed the funding round. Now with it being postponed, I just wanna check, we got all of their paperwork that they'd normally have to submit within the funding round for that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no more questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item twelve. So we're getting there. So item twelve point one is the Major Projects Overview Report. And the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty one Major Projects Overview Report as presented. Would someone like to move that motion?
So I move, Coglan.
Thank you, Co- Councilor Coglan. Would someone like to second that motion?
Take your mute off, Councilor Tully. She didn't get you.
Oh.
Yep, seconded.
Seconded, thank you, Councilor Tully. Um, Councilor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion? Oh, yeah, look, the report's pretty standard with what's going on, but I just would like to ask, when would the, um, the cover over the Ninja Warrior, when, when is that being started?
Through you, Madam Mayor, we are waiting on the toilets. Another few. Another few pieces of equipment and the cover. I believe it's been done, and I'm sorry, Renee is an apology today, or the Director Wallace is an apology, she's crook. I shouldn't say crook, ill. I believe that the supply chains are just holding this up. I think it's only got another two to three weeks to go. And then we will have a formal opening of the facility. I've had feedback from some of the guys that drive the rubbish trucks that indicate that it's almost impossible to get in there in the morning because there's so many kids and families using the facility at the moment, which is really good feedback to be getting. But in the next two to three weeks, I believe, subject to that material's getting here.
Councilor Tully, do you have any comments on this one?
Yeah, no, just with the, with the, the opening of the, you know, the Gleyplin Park pump track, we, Councilor George and myself went down there in this soft opening. And from all reports, you know, I'd go past there a fair bit and there's, you know, there's always kids there playing. And so it's, you know, well patronised, so that's, that's a good idea. It's a, you know, a great result for us. And the splash is inflatable thing which I trialled myself and did a great job.
Debatable.
From all reports, I beat Director Wallace's time too, so, you know, I was very happy with that. Thank you.
No, that's great. And I too was at the soft opening. And one of the workers apparently has been practising on that Ninja obstacle course and is doing record times. And I did mention that we probably should have videoed him, put him up on our website so people had something to try and beat. Because it's good to know who's already got a good time and then trying to beat that. So that could be something we could look at if he hasn't already gone. Okay, is there any other comments on this one?
No. Just like to say, Madam Mayor, it's good to see the Kemwell toilet block are getting, just getting manufactured off-site and hopefully not before too long it'll be installed at Kemwell.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. And that takes us now to our next one, which is twelve point two. I haven't jumped past it, which is Works and Operations Overview Report. So the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty one Works and Operations Overview Report. Could I get someone to move that motion, please?
Move, Coghlan.
Thank you, Councilor Coghlan. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. Council Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, I just would like to ask a question through the chair. With, with the amount of vandalism that happens along our medium strips and with the, in the CBD, do we pursue the people that are doing that?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So the process is that where we identify there's been vandalism, we then report that to the police. The police have the same video that we have and they go through the same prosecutions. I noticed over the last two or three weeks that the level of vandalism has actually dropped a little bit. We will continue to cooperate with the police and use their videos wherever possible.
Okay. And with the work that's going out at the cemetery, the wall that's been taken away, when do we look like finishing the replacement?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That's one of the projects included in the Capital Works Programme was actually discussed last week. It's not far away at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the, through the chair, could I just ask about the biggest thing that attracts a vandal appears to be the in-ground sprinklers and drippers? I just wonder if we could look at if there's any different types of those materials around now that are a bit more vandal-proof? Because we have been using the same sort of, I understand the director's not there today, so it might be a question we take back. But we might be able to get something a bit more muscly and a bit stronger that as we replace these things, we could use those instead. But unless there's nothing else available, I just, just a question. Thank you.
No worries. Through you. Carrie's got a note of that, so we'll talk to Director Wallace about that one.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. And this now takes us to item twelve point three, which is the supplementary item. So you should have a second document, either on email or actually hand it out physically to you. And this is thirty point three, the additional reseal work. So, oh, sorry, twelve point three. What did I say? Thirty, sorry about that. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chairs, this is RPQ Spray Seal. Yeah, through the chair, I'll move the recommendation that council issues RPQ Spray Seal Company Limited a variation notice to undertake an extra six thousand and fifty-six square metres of reseal at its existing contract rates. And that council issues a request for tender, RFT, on local buy as a closed tender to Fulton Hogan Copen's Constructions and Stabilise Pavements Australia, SPA, for the extra rehabilitation and reseal works of eighteen thousand square metres as a separate contract.
Thank you, Council Fortune. Would someone like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. Council Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
One of the complaints you usually get as a council is the condition of the roads around the place. So it's great to see that the extra works can be done. I'd like to get a feedback through the CEO of the streets that are targeted for these because...
Through you, Madam Mayor. I knew you'd asked that question and we actually discussed this last week. But the streets won't be fully determined until they negotiate that out with the different contractors and then they'll have a hierarchy, but I will circulate those to councillors.
That's fine. It's just good to have the names of the streets up your sleeve when we can have them.
Yep.
Just to inform people who may be asking.
No worries. Through you, Madam Mayor. Once this report's adopted, we'll get a hierarchy of those ones which will be undertaken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just through the chair, Madam Mayor, David, I'm just going through those numbers there with the square meterage and the costs. They just don't seem to add up.
Through you, Madam Mayor. They're not meant to add up because there's a separate engagement of those three different companies that are listed there. So there are different amounts that are going to go through and they'll be, they'll be asked to provide the quotation within this. So this is part of a broader group.
No, I'm not talking about the rate per square metre from the original contract, which was, where was it? I think it was three hundred and four thousand? Is that correct?
Sorry, where are you popping your three hundred and four thousand from?
So in the overview, it says a contract had been previously awarded to the value of three hundred and four thousand for sixty-one thousand square metres of reseal?
So through you, Madam Mayor, we've actually cancelled that contract, if I'm not mistaken. Sorry, no, that contract continues, but we've added the other ones there as well. So they're not meant to add up to a final figure, as I understand it.
No, but the square meterage for the three hundred and four thousand is a lot different to the variation, is what I'm saying. You'd, you'd think that the price per square metre would be the same on the variation as the original contract?
No, there is a really good reason for this and I'll have to come back to you. But I asked the same question to Manager Pitt. Can you allow me to come back to you on that one?
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Tully. Any other questions or comments on this one? All right, all those.
I just, sorry, before, I think we need to get the whole overview before we go any further with this. Or was it imperative that it gets passed today?
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor. The whole point of this one is to pass it today to utilise the contractors while they're in Mount Isa. Otherwise, there's going to be a delayed period.
Do you want to do a quick adjournment before we go into closed and then we can check on this information?
I'm happy to try and get in touch with the manager and go from there if that's what you want to do.
And then we can have a quicker, when we have our adjournment, David can make a few phone calls and then we can re-adjourn and see if he's got that information for you, Councilor Tully.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that. Thank you.
I just, through you, Councilor Tully, I seem to be remembering that it depends on the existing condition of the roads and that's where may be the difference in the treatments on those roads. But I'm happy.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. But I mean, it's a, it's a fair, like, it's a significant difference.
Would you bear with me if I get the manager on the phone, hopefully?
Certainly, no problem at all.
You don't want me to adjourn? No?
Well, no, if Councilor Tully is there, it'd be better for me to do it this way because it'll get it over and done with.
Yeah, yeah, I'd rather get it done. I mean, if they're here, it needs to be done. Because, I mean, it will save money on, you know, re-establishing their gear and all that here.
Hey, Ross, David Keenan speaking. Believe it or not, I'm in a council meeting at the moment. And there's a query that's come through from Councilor Tully in relation to the reseals. Would it be all right if I popped you on speakerphone? And keep in mind, you have the other councillors and a gallery here at the moment as well. You there, Ross?
Yes, I am.
Can you ask the question, please, Councilor Tully?
You're on mute, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Thank you, CEO. Yeah, Ross, I was just inquiring about the original contract per square metre is a significant difference to the variation price for the same, for the square metre. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Well, the original contract price was around sixty-one thousand square metres and that was awarded to RPQ as they were the best contractor at the time. There is another six thousand and fifty-six square metres that can be resealed under the same, I would say, under the same process as what the original, that we have stitched down as we were able to acquire more funding through R2R. That six thousand and fifty-six squares is well within RPQ's capabilities. However, the other eighteen thousand square metres is beyond their capability as it requires more specialised treatments. But we have the funding there to undertake that extra eighteen thousand square metres now through R2R funding.
Could you hear that, Councilor Tully?
Yeah, I heard, I heard a fair bit of it, but I mean, yeah, I, I guess, did the, did the other councillors hear it? And are they happy with it, I guess?
I couldn't understand.
I couldn't understand well, no.
No, but to my understanding, the rehabilitation and asphalt placement is two-coat sealing. That's where the extra cost's coming in, I think, Council.
Yeah, they're right.
Ross, is there, are there extra costs with the two-coat sealing?
Yes, yep.
Just hang on, Ross. Sorry, I hate this phone. Sorry, go now, Ross.
Okay, the extra costs associated with the profiling and the milling out, because we can't just seal straight over the top of these extra roads because there's substantial depressions in the pavement, so they'd have to be profiled out. The asphalt, the forty-mil asphalt required in some of the sections is beyond the capabilities of RPQ as they're specialising in the two-coat seal. They can supply from another plant down in Mackay, but it's not very really viable for them to undertake that. And basically, the most important part of it that they can't undertake is the profiling and the rehabilitation works before the sealing takes place. Their capabilities are basically to seal straight over existing, which we have, which council has done in the past. But where it requires the milling out, it's more of a specialised process that they can't quote on.
Councilor Tully, are you happy with that? Yeah, on mute, Councilor Tully.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all happy with that. Thank you.
Ross, can I ask a supplementary question, please? Are you able to give an indication of which streets this involves?
Yes, I can. I can do that right now. I'm actually writing a RFT as we speak. Okay, Flower Street, Carnation Street, Begonia Street and Astor Street. There's approximately five thousand square metres in there. That would be a profile, rehab profiles to create, create rideability and reseal with a two-coat seal. The other one is Twenty First Avenue from Fourth Avenue to Railway Parade, approximately three thousand two hundred and thirteen square metres. That is a rehab profile to create rideability and reseal as two-coat seals. And these processes also, if there's a pavement failure existing, that'll be rectified at the same time. So we're not just putting material straight over material. We're actually making sure that it's a, it's a strong base that's going to outlast longer. West Street, Marion Street to Radio Drive, approximately three thousand eight hundred and twenty-one square metres. That will be to rehab, profile, create rideability and place forty-mil asphalt. Radio Drive roundabouts, including Miles and Simpson Street, there's nine hundred and thirty square metres there. That's going to also be to rehab it and place forty-mil AC asphalt. And the final one is Marroquie and Rabaul, which is going to be rehab, profile and where required and reseal with two-coat seal. And that's five thousand square metres in there.
Good on you, Ross. Thank you so much and I'll let you get back to writing your RFT.
No worries, cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
That's great, thank you. Okay, any, any other comments on this one before we?
So David, just to, through the chair, just to clarify, Mr. CEO, the, we're asked, we're being asked to approve forty thousand dollars in addition to the, as in addition to the current contract. And it's at the existing contract rates.
Correct.
Yeah, and then the, the rest of the work is going to go to tender through local buy.
Correct, through local.
Yeah, yeah. And is the, the reseal work, is that contingent on the other work being done, the seven hundred and forty thousand estimate?
I'm not sure of that, but this is all out of R2R funding.
Yeah, okay. I'm just wondering if we need to have that other tender work done prior to the forty thousand dollars that we're asked to approve today to be done? Or we have to wait?
We're using them off, we're using them off local buy in a closed tender.
Okay.
Which has been, which has been authorised by our procurement specialist who we use on a casual basis.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there's no more comments or questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. Thank you. All right, so item thirteen, notices of motion are nil. So we are now going to adjourn briefly and then when we reopen, we will go into closed business. So I'd just like to thank all the general public who came in today and really appreciate you being in attendance. Thank you so much. The time is now eleven oh four and we're just adjourned.